The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
We are calling the New Britain Board of Education to order. And... Secretary is fiddling around.
Is anything important, Merrill? Come on.
It's not on, okay, so...
You're gonna have to say that all over again.
Take it all over again, yes, okay. All right. Okay, it is 6:15 and we are calling this meeting of the New Britain Board of Education to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Wistrow, you want to lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we do the roll call of members?
Mr. Merrill Gagis.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Marquez.
Here.
Dr. Diana Jimenez.
Here.
Mr. Monica Long.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
He's here, but I don't... I think he just stepped out. He is here, though.
Mr. Joseph Wistrow.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Tina Samdian.
She may be connecting, but not yet. Okay. So let's move on to a moment of meditation. Okay. And the staff and student recognition. Staff and staffer recognition, yes, sorry.
That's okay, I know, I think I should probably move down. Yes, we have with us... I'm trying to see which students we have with us. Mariah, and I'm not sure if Mom is there, too.
Melody's up there.
Yeah, and...
No, and Ty, Ty.
Okay, so we have students who took it upon themselves to do a... A project where they recognized that there was a problem and they found a solution. So I'm gonna turn it over to them. They can speak a little bit to what they did, what the problem was, and how they solved it. So I'm gonna turn it over to you guys now.
I can't see who's up there.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, they're in the same room, they're gonna one... Yeah. Maybe join onto the one computer. Can I speak a little bit more while you guys are thinking about that? I'll speak a little bit. They took it upon themselves to find books that represented the students who are in New Britain. They went to our libraries and they found that there weren't books that really looked like them or some of their friends. And so they raised... How much money did you girls end... Or how many books did you end up raising or purchasing?
You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Kids are never this quiet.
So we donated 770 books so far, but we have many more books. Two will be donated, but donation-wise, we donated 770 books.
Cheers. Do any of the board members have questions for both of our elementary heroes?
Is that how you do it?
I am ready to speak on a little bit of what, why, and how, and where we are now.
Sounds good.
We started a Black Character Matter mission on June 29, 2020. We started the mission when we talked about not having fun black character books in our school libraries. We talked about... We talked about when I saw a plate of fun character books at a bookstore, but I didn't see any at my school. So during our summer vacation, we went to events, rallies, and peaceful protests to talk about our mission. Our mission got bigger because of all the hard work Ty, Ty, and I are doing. We won't... We went to around communities and other communities, selling Black Lives Matter bookmarks for $1 or donations. We also have a GoFundMe and an Amazon wishes so people can donate. We knew the more money we raised, the more books we could donate. We would come home to piles of buckets with books that people have donated, people from towns and states beyond Connecticut who also believe in our mission. We want to make sure that everyone knows that the books we donate to school libraries are for students. We want to make sure the books are available when students want to take the book out. We want to make sure that the students are able to enjoy reading the books, something I learned our ancestors were not able to do. Black Character Matter mission has one purpose, and that is to make sure all students in all communities throughout Connecticut and beyond have books with characters that may look like them to read and enjoy. We know representation matters, even in our school libraries. Thank you for recognition. Black Character Matter mission continues as we start to donate in other districts throughout the state. Thank you.
Hey, Mariah, I hear you're quite the poet. Oh, I was just kidding. Sorry. I hear you're quite the poet. Mrs. Denegrey was gonna introduce. Mrs. Denegrey, can you speak to that for just a minute? And then maybe Mariah will bless us with her poem.
Sure, so Mariah is a poet who just recently had her poem published into a children's book. Mariah, do you have a copy of the book?
Yes.
And that is Mariah's first published work as a published author, and we're really proud of the work that she's doing. So she's taking what she's learning and she's going beyond it. So we're really happy that... And I hear you have a publishing party coming up soon?
Yeah, March 11.
March 11. Can you read us a page or two from your book?
Um, yeah. "Don't allow hate to play your heart, because we're all better together, not apart." "Love remains one no matter what, race or color, because love ruins when the pines of one another." And then the back says, "My name is Mariah and I'm nine years old. I wrote this book to remind everyone that we are better together. Let's continue to push out hate by loving and respecting each other regardless of race or color."
I was just gonna introduce Suzie. Ms. Hansley is there also, and she is the Vice Principal at Vance. She's there, and she's there on behalf also of the Principal Sarah Harris, who just delivered twin boys on Sunday. I think it was Sunday, Sunday morning. So thank you, you must be very proud.
Yes, we are extremely proud of the work that Ty, Sean, and Mariah have done, as well as Mom Melody and Carrie Clark, our kindergarten teacher, have worked diligently to really make a positive impact in our New Britain community, as well as really just taking the mission and running with it and really impacting other communities around New Britain. So we're so proud of them. Principal Harris wishes she could be here. She delivered two beautiful boys on Saturday, so she's missing everyone and sends her love, but obviously her focus is on those two precious babies. Their names are Liam, I'll just brag on her a little bit, Liam and Riley. So she's doing well, and we're so, again, so proud of Mariah and Ty, Sean for their hard work. And we make sure our kids at Vance know that no matter how small you are, right, you can just make a huge impact. And so, again, we're so pleased for them, and thank you for allowing them to share their work with you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the next meeting. Yep, please do.
I just wanna say thank you for sharing this amazing work that you're doing, and you're having such a big impact on your school, on your community, and just to share even a little bit of how beyond that you're making an impact probably well into the future. So I'm a professor at UConn and an administrator, and so I have students who are doing their student teaching in New Britain for the first time this semester we have partnered with New Britain. And I've had at least two students in their reflections write about this project. They didn't know my role, they didn't know that I'm, you know, that I'm a board member and what's going on. And so just on their own, you have future teachers already reflecting on how to make sure that their classrooms have literature that includes all of their children. And so what you're doing right now is, you know, going well beyond just your immediate community and classroom, and I just wanted to share that with you, so thank you.
I wanted to take a moment, and this did start as a project, but it's actually a mission now. So I know a lot of people may still call it a project 'cause they don't know all the work that's been done behind the scenes and what will continue to be done. And I would definitely prefer if everyone would call it a mission, because that's what it is. A project comes to an admission, never... It's long-lasting, and that's what this is for us. Especially the other day when we had donated to Smith School, and one of the things... The first thing my daughter said was, "Who's gonna continue this when we're gone?" So she's thinking so far into the future about someone else taking on this when she's gone that I no longer see it as a project. We see it as a mission, and that's why we have the word "mission" in our... In the state, you know, in the organization in itself. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you.
And also, we're going to... The book is going to be at the Boys and Girls Club through 7 to 9 o'clock.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the rest of our meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to the superintendent's report. Do we have public participation? Anybody on the phone?
There's one number 770 area code that ends in 46.
If you are on the phone with the area code 770 and you'd like to speak, go ahead and do so.
Okay, good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, good evening, everyone. My name is Rory T. Edwards. Some of you might know me. Some of you I have the honor of working with, many of you. I've had the honor of serving as the president of the NAACP many years ago in the city. Also, a product of the city. Grew up, went to school there, and also created great opportunities for the city while as the president of the NAACP. But I hope that what I have wanted to share, President Gay will give me a few extra minutes to share the concerns that I have based on some of the meetings that I've been listening to over the last six months. So I hope that I have that ability to do that. Because one of the things, the things that I truly want to discuss is what I've heard over the last six months, and also in my... Coming back and forth to New Britain, one of the things that has been... One of... A big discussion has been the C rule. And for some of you who might know me or were in that particular realm of work, when the C rule was passed, 23... Between 23 and 25 years ago, I, as the architect of that C rule, as the president of the NAACP, would like to share with you all how that became what was supposed to become for students, not just in athletics, but students who participated in extracurricular activities. And so as president of the NAACP, I had a mother who came to me and said that she wanted the NAACP to intervene based on the fact that her son, who had reached the potential of being a college athlete, was not getting letters and was not being able to compete or to participate in college combines because academically he was not eligible to go to college. And so one of the things that I did at that time is I looked at what the standards were for the NCAA, and what it took for individuals to be able to move from high school to college. And so for the last 30 years, that has been my role in serving not only people in cities, but serving people nationwide, serving people internationally on how you move from high school to college. And so what I've been doing is listening to a few of the meetings, and there's two meetings that I really want to go back to. I want to go back to the 10-5-20 board meeting, but I will come back to that a little later. But I do want to talk about what the school district's website message is as far as this C rule. And it says, "We are pleased to inform you that New Britain High School is making CoreCourseGPA.com a web-based software program available to all New Britain high school student athletes and their parents, guardians, free of charge." But then, as I put a message about three months ago on social media, what happened was when I... People were responding to the C rule, and a board member, Dr. Sims, responded and said to me that she would like to know more. And so what I did is I did respond to Dr. Sims on that particular social media platform, with that what I did say is I will share the C rule initiative a little bit later. And I looked at last month's meeting, and so what I wanted to do was share what the purpose of the C rule was. Now, for me, the C rule was not about punishing athletes who couldn't academically meet the requirements to move on to college. It was about preparing young people to be successful in life. Because what we realize is that when you put a numerical grade based on what a requirement is, you put that person at a disadvantage or an advantage. But when we look at what the eligibility determination is in the state of Connecticut, we have to base that on why the C rule was really initiated. Now, 22 to 24 years ago, even though the C rule was passed, the C rule was downgraded to a C minus. Now, for all of you sitting in the room, you know that a C minus is an equivalent to a D plus. And if we were to send anyone out into the world with a D plus on their resume, most cases, they would not be able to be hired as an employer or as employee student. And so what happened was, when I listened to last month's meeting, I saw a assistant superintendent inform, sort of explain, and tried to answer Dr. Sims' question on the CIAC rules of eligibility. And I'd just like to share that with you, because I'm gonna make all... I'm gonna make all sense of all of this as I conclude. And what it said is, "The eligibility for CoreCourse is determined by a number of credits received towards graduation at the close of the previous school year, not the fourth marking period grades. You must receive credit in at least four carnage units of work." Now, what I'm gonna do is leave that word carnage units of work up to you to determine, because I think that the word carnage units is something that, when I researched it, that really didn't give the person the requirements to participate in Division I athletics or Division II athletics based on the academic score, or the GPA, or the SAT or ACT scores. And so what we realized is that in 1970, when I was a student at New Britain High School, the one thing that we had was coaches who truly cared about our future. And those coaches required us to participate not only on the field of play, but also in the classroom at the highest level of competition. And so what I want to do is let people know that what I am trying to share with you is definitely, definitely not personal. What it's all about is producing the best students that you possibly can. And so when we look at the 70s, the CIAC eligibility requirements reflect what the NC2A's requirements were in the 1970s, that any freshman entering college could have a 1 point in the GPA. But in 1972, they banned, they banned that requirement, and what they went to is in 1985, they proposed Proposition 48 requirement, which went into effect in 1986. Now, the Proposition 48 requirement eliminated a lot of students of color from entering college. The first year, 40 to 60% of freshmen entering college were ineligible to participate in sports. And so we have to look at what did the Proposition 48 do to eliminate students from different areas or different parts of the country or different academic learning levels to be able to come in and actually participate in sports? So that takes me to the 10-5-20 board meeting for which I watched. And then the public participation, I heard that the students wanted to use the uniforms to participate in some extracurricular football activities. But the thing that stood out to me the most, as still a very active member of the community through a lot of affiliates and a lot of associates that I have who still live there, and also making sure that I listen to things that will affect the outcome of my mother, who still lives there. One of the things that I heard from young people was that, "This is my way out. This is my way out of the city." But what I did, what I... But the thing that also was very concerning to me was that it seemed to be more concerned with what the affluent communities, neighboring affluent communities, were doing for their sports teams besides based on us stating that there was a global pandemic going on which caused these young people not to participate in sports. It wasn't by anybody doing that caused them not to participate in sports. And so when we talk about getting people to get out of the community, you must understand what it takes to get out of the community. And so the thing that I am more concerned about, and the reason for me calling this, to make sure that there's clarity on this C rule initiative, and that at the time of when I initiated this C rule concern with the board, it's always been about the life success of the students who come out of the city that I came from and was able to make it based on the fact that somebody was concerned about the expectations that I met to become a valuable and viable citizen in this country. So I want to sort of leave with two things. I want to talk about what the Consolidated School District of New Britain's mission is. And when I do this work across the country, the one thing that always happens is I always tell people to go back to what your mission is. And the mission says, "In partnership with families and community, the Consolidated School District of New Britain works to provide the best personalized and comprehensive whole-child education at every level, so students will be prepared for and positively contribute to a profoundly different future. The Consolidated School District of New Britain strives to pursue excellence one step at a time." And that's exactly what this call is about. So in conclusion, my concern is based, and has always been about life success. Based on all the information you have posted on your website and your mission statement, how can anyone in a position of power allow children to compete not only in sports based on mediocre standards by the CIAC policy, but allow them as students first to believe this is the bar for life success? For me, this call is not about sports, it's about the journey of student athletes from my city. That 23 years ago, when I initiated the C rule initiative, it was about, and always will be about succeeding at life. Because one thing that I do know in this work, and in the journey that I take every day, and as I talk to school districts and families and parents and people across this globe, the one thing that I do know is the power of words and those who feel betrayed by a system who are suffering from a chokehold of failure. And that's what I heard from those young people on 10-5-20, is that, "This is my way out." "No, no, no, sports will never be your way out. Sports will be a tool that will get you an opportunity to be able to see the world from a different perspective, but your foundation in education will always be the way that will take you to wherever you dream to go." And so I thank you all for giving me this opportunity to share, and I guess if there will be any questions, I'm definitely not hard to find. Everything I do is from Rory T. Edwards. So if you would like to further, have a further conversation with me about this, I truly, truly welcome that opportunity. And I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share and to have extended time that I want to bring clarity to this particular C rule initiative, because I am the person who brought this to the board 23 years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you guys have anybody else who's on the participation? Nope. Okay. Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm gonna start with a video. I want it to just get, as we're loading it, and I think Matt is doing that from a remote place. He's gonna show an example of some of the work that our building leaders are doing around motivating students to come back to school. So Matt, if you can present.
All right, I'm gonna hope this sound goes through here. I know I've had trouble with this in the past, so I'm gonna try. Did you click the checkbox that said "share sound"? I didn't see a checkbox pop up. Yeah, so the problem with Google Meets is it won't share sound. It won't share sound unless you're doing something in Chrome. So if you don't have it in Chrome, the best way to handle that would be to leave your microphone on, turn up your speakers, and don't say anything. Turn up your microphone on. Leave your microphone on, have speakers on, and we'll hear the sound through your microphone. It's gonna start coming back to the board meetings, that's what I'm gonna do.
That's right.
I mean, really, that's the goal, Matt. Okay, I'm gonna play the first... So the first, these two are about our efforts to improve attendance around the district. And the first one is a phone call that Polaski Middle School, Ms. Robles, does on, I believe, near daily basis, if not daily basis, to her students. And then we're gonna show a really fun video from Smalley and Lincoln that they've just been rocking it on social media with that kind of thing, and it's getting a lot of great reaction and a lot of good fun from that. So I'll play the phone call first, so you can listen to it.
Good morning, Polaski generals. This is Mrs. Robles, this is Mrs. Stavion. We are the morning fairies. It is time to wake up and get ready for class. Remember, you need to check in at 8:20, freshly every morning. All your teachers are waiting for you. We can't wait to see you this morning. Buenos dias, a los generales y las jefas. Esta es la semana estrella, señora Robles. Somos tus adorables minas de la mañana. Un último momento, no faltes. Y arréstate para tu traje. Recuerda que necesitas reportarte a las ojos y te metes al punto. Todos tus maestros te están esperando. Nosotros esperamos verte ahora en la mañana.
All right, and then the next one, I'm gonna stop presenting here and then re-present my screen. This one is in Chrome. So I'm gonna figure this one out, I'm gonna fly here. So I'm gonna share this. Share a tab instead of sharing your window. So when you click "Present Now," choose a Chrome tab from the options. You got it, all right. And then you'll have a little checkbox for "Share Sound." I'm gonna pull in the URL to this window here and then present this. And this is... This was released this afternoon. And this is, I believe, and Ms. Flegel, you can correct me here if I'm wrong, but Smalley put this together, and they did it jointly with Lincoln Elementary School. And there's been a few videos leading up to this point. We posted one on the school district page a few days ago, and that got quite a few shares, I believe, over. and that got quite a few shares, I believe over seventy-five shares, and a lot of different reactions. And they posted individual ones on their pages as well. So if you want to go check those out, you can do that on Smalley's page, Lincoln's page, or the school district's page. And then here is one that was uploaded this afternoon, and on the Smalley page, Lincoln page, and school district page. So Nick, Dwight, you have my microphone now from here?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, he just has to actually hit play on the video now.
Top ADA total, so Lincoln is ninety-six point five. ADA per mile is ninety-four point five.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, what's that? Oh, Lincoln School, buddy, for a big one, Lincoln School.
Nothing can stop me, I'm all the way up. All the way up, all the way up. I'm all the way up, all the way up. I'm all the way up.
Oh, are they tiny, pal? You're tiny, huh? Hello, Mary, Mary, hello. Pretty very close.
Oh, they lost.
They lost.
Hello, Lincoln School. Smalley, you're in the house, and we brought you a fresh, safe, clean pie for your two administrators. Good job on your attendance this week, you guys made a lot of improvement. But fell a little short. But we have next week to try again, and we will see who wins next Friday. Right now, though, Buzzy's here, and you're ready to give a special green pie to your two lovely administrators. Oh, oh, who's this?
Leo.
Oh, your horse is here. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The alliance has arrived, and Buzzy and Leo, so they have a great time after we propose to give the pie to Mr. Reeves and Mrs. Polly.
We just got it. We take it all for.
That's supposed to be AP. They're running for the pod. It just so happens that the AP, this homie is married to AP's mom.
Three, two, one.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to announce the winner of our tenth challenge. Are you ready? I think you picked up white stuff this week, ladies and gentlemen, so it's a fun, long, and Smalley has been fun as well. Ladies and gentlemen, this got open next week, so there's a new competition in Lincoln School. And now he's going to go over your white card.
So that's some of the fun things that are happening around the district, I will say. Since probably over the last five weeks, as building leaders have invited, started inviting more families four days a week, we have doubled our numbers in our middle schools and our high school as well. Actually, more than doubled, it's flayed. So we're seeing a real uptick in the kids. And part of it too is, I think there's some, you know, winter is over. There's probably several reasons for it. You know, and again, we all look forward to the day we can bring them all back full-time. But the principals will continue to host these challenges and also call the families to get the kids back in. So that was, hold on, because I'm using my phone here. And I want to take a minute now too, and I'm gonna read this, I wrote this earlier. I don't know if you noticed when you walked in, there are gifts on the back table. It is Board Appreciation Month. And there are actually pictures in frames. And I think these are super special. We typically have our students do their artwork, and we make them into cards every year. This year, it was difficult to do that just with the pandemic. So our art teachers got together and they put together beautiful paintings, pictures, prints, that we have made into cards. So we do have them framed, and we are hoping we can hang those in the boardroom, you know, when we get back there. But also, this is just, it's a small token. And let me just get my phone on here. And I just want to say on behalf of the students, families, and staff, I'd like to take a moment to thank our board members publicly. Speaking as a former student, a former parent, a former teacher, and an administrator, I don't think people understand the importance of serving on the Board of Education. From the monthly commitment to board meetings, subcommittee meetings, discussions, readings, approving a multimillion dollar budget, board members give so much of their time and talent to ensure a better education for all of our students in New Britain, to ensure a better workplace environment equipped with resources for all of our staff, and having to be an outward-facing role to all the community members and families. Over the last five years, I've been very fortunate that we've had a board committed to students, not politics, a united board. Please accept these gifts as small tokens of our appreciation. With gratitude, Superintendent Nancy Sarah on behalf of ten thousand students strong. So I can't thank you enough for the work you do. It's small, but I think it's really meaningful with the cards. I love them every time I look at them. And you'll have the name of the art teacher on the back, and what school she is from. And just enjoy the gifts, and please know that we appreciate you. Even down to our students, if they don't know exactly what you do. They think you're next to like president, so that's pretty cool. And the only other thing, and you can read this after, we had a successful week with vaccinations as far as our staff goes. Hoping if all goes well by the end of this week or next week, our first rounds will be in. Every staff member here in New Britain, we're working in concert with DPH. You're actually sitting in the IT section of the Vaccine Clinic on Saturday. We have our clinics that run out there. We are taking care, Department of Public Health has really helped also with EC Goodwin, childcare and all the others. So hopefully by the end of this Saturday, every, every staff member will have their vaccination. And we'll start up with the second rounds, which is really pretty exciting. It gets us closer to hopefully, you know, more in-person learning. Also, the governor's proposed budget, it's just proposed now, which is, that's the good news. The bad news is if it passes, they will actually be suspending the ECS formula that was a promise to us that was made two years ago. This would have been our third year receiving the ECS, using the formula with the ECS dollars. If this budget passes, we will not be getting our ECS dollars, which equals about four million dollars for us. Now, you know, we do have the CARES dollars, which is twenty-two point nine, but we shouldn't have to supplant and take money out of there to go to our local budget. So as much advocating as we can possibly do, I know from the superintendent's level, we have all actually signed a letter, sent letters in, spoken on behalf of especially the urban districts, who are due to lose the most money. So more to come, I'll keep you abreast of that. And basically, that's it overall. Did you have a question, Mel?
No.
You looked perplexed.
Think about the public hearing tomorrow.
Right.
I do have a quick question.
Sure.
So with regards to the vaccine?
Yeah.
Knowing adults from like, I think it's twenty-five to fifty, have pretty bad reactions phase two, but they recover. But it's like an eight-hour, ten-hour, are we prepared for that? Like as a district to be able to handle that many teachers out for that?
So what we did was we staggered by building, right? So there's, I mean, when we schedule, and we were actually doing the scheduling, we're not letting the teachers or the staff schedule themselves. And so it's been an odd effort between Jackie Maddie, Kiva Mancini, and Karen Leary, who, we look at the names of the people, we make sure that we're being fair to each building and not taking too many out of each grade too much at the time. So yeah, we've done that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, it would have been, that's why we, that's why we decided to sign them up ourselves versus them signing up.
Because districts are taken like a snow day.
Right.
Because they, they're understaffed.
Right.
Because they're, they're.
No, we're, we're good. On top of that one.
Okay, let's move to committee reports. Policy committee reports.
They're reported this time.
Okay, first of all. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at you in that. Yeah, we had a meeting, and we have a few things on the agenda that we're going to be asking you to approve tonight, and that's about it.
And Rachel?
We met and have some items on the agenda as well. Most, I think, went to us and then to finance as well for digital and print resources that, some are renewals and some are brand-new. And probably the biggest ticket item, which is Jade, is for our entire math program. So it's replacing the current, the current materials used for the math curriculum completely. So like the books, the, you know, the online use. And so the, it's a lot at once, but over the time, it actually saves like twenty-something thousand dollars compared to what we were paying anyway for those books and consumables for math as it is. So just a, just a little backstory on the giant sticker price, but, you know, it was, it's just needed anyway, but by doing it for a longer amount of time, we actually save money.
Finance, it was a long one, it was busy, it wasn't quite as long as personnel was that day. We, you know, we normally, we put a lot of things on consent. This particular meeting, there was a lot of like IT renewing licenses and, and stuff like that. We had some technology grants for low-performing schools that went to Smalley, Northern, and Chamberlain. We did have a couple of facilities updates, School Dude and the NBHS ADA Compliance Project. What was the big, there's, except the donations. And then we did just see the student recognition from the Vant students, Ty Ty and Mariah. It was fourteen thousand dollars, just, I mean, plus the books, so. So you know, that is all, it was pretty busy, pretty busy tonight.
And are there any board reports?
I participated in, I was a speaker for Black History Month for my granddaughter's social studies class. They were doing a unit on segregation and listening to the conversation. I volunteered myself to be speaker to my grandkids' amazement. But it worked out nicely, and afterwards they said, you never told us all of those stories. So they participated, asked questions, and it was nice, I enjoyed doing it.
I just did, a quick, you know me, I love my sports, I like to be in person. It's painful not to be able to go to basketball games, et cetera. But huge shout-out to Randy Broshu. When he does the announcing, it's like you're at the game, it's like super cool. And then whoever, you know, helped out with the technology of actually getting, it was like simple YouTube, and now it's actually like you're watching like a professional game. It's pretty cool, and I know the parents appreciate it too, and the people who love to go to the games.
I think it's the team, right? I think Smalley's involved, Broshu's involved, Kanata, Prokop.
Yeah, I didn't, that's why I didn't say names.
There's a lot of them, I think, that are, that are involved in that.
But Randy's doing like the announcing. So that's like him and Mr. Peterson. But that's why I didn't mention names, because I didn't know who was responsible for the tech piece.
Yeah.
I don't know either.
Magical, no?
I love it.
If there are no other board reports, I'd just like to make a motion to move Item 5B up to our next item in the agenda, because we have people here to speak on that under new business.
That's cool, I just had a quick one though.
Okay, sorry.
I got to read to an elementary class for Read Across America. So that was fun, I read the book, The Day You Begin, which I saw on the Report of All the Books, Mariah and Ty collected that, that was one of them, that's one of my favorites. And I also was a guest speaker at, I can't remember her last name, and I don't want to call her by her first name, but Ms. Joyce, the Latinos in Action course.
Oh, oh, oh.
At the, at the high school. And that was really nice connecting with those students and kind of telling my story. And first, they were all shy, and then they were like, wait, you're Dominican, you're the, you know, and then we had some good conversations. And they shared about having recently spoken to Dr. Cardona as their guest speaker.
Yeah.
And just some impactful people.
They were here actually Saturday too, as interpreters helping our families out, our staff out, or some of our subscribers in terms of, you know, working on tech, so. It's nice, it seems to be catching.
So I guess now I make a motion to Item 5B up for our next item of business.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Do you guys want?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to go on.
I would take it off.
Very, very all that.
And we're gonna, they're gonna do your flyover or whatever it is.
Can Matt hear us from the side?
Matt, so can you get that started?
What's that?
So we'd just like to bring everyone up to speed on the Chamberlain project. You know, it's been a while since we discussed this with the board. So this meeting, this, we're gonna do the flyover, which shows us the building in itself, the design. We've got Kefaloo's here, we've got Newfield here as well. We'd like to bring everyone up to speed on the construction, or actually the project, and what the plans are, and the design, where we are in the phase of, how far away we are from construction, and where we are in state of progress.
Can you see that all right?
We missed the boardroom.
I was gonna say, if you want, put it maybe up in this row.
Can Matt present the flyover, and Matt even?
Matt?
Chris has the files, so she's been downloading them, but they're pretty big, so I'm not sure where she gets the status with that right now.
Can you present them from where you are?
No, I don't have the files, Chris has the files.
Well, is there something you can discuss first before we?
Yeah, so why don't you just bring up to speed on the project, where you are right now?
Sure. Thank you for inviting us.
You're able to get it?
Let's see if it goes smoothly.
See if it applies.
So we came here sometime in November and we sent the schematics. We are moving forward with it. And we were going to the state to get the TD approval. It's a process. December, we went to the state with TD. They made some comments. We addressed the comments. We sent it to the principal, Manny, and to Kevin to make sure that the comments they made, they're not programming changes, just some changes. And we got a feedback from Kevin and Manny that was great. We met with the music teacher, we met with the arts teacher to make sure that what we are providing, they are okay with it. They reviewed with us, everything was fine. We met with Ms. Clark and the staff for the rooms with the.
Yearing there.
Yearing impact. And whatever concerns with, we had addressed all of them. And I just want the board to understand, appreciate it, that I appreciate Kevin, that he came on board in such a short time, but he has been very helpful. He's expediting it, and we are in constant communication and trying to make sure that we move the world forward. And I really appreciate it. We have a lot of steps to go to come to the finish line. And our immediate step is we are going to the city hall to meet with the building inspectors this coming Thursday. And that is for them to talk to us as a group of inspectors to make sure that everything we have, they are okay with it. We already have the zoning with Trattier. We looked at it. And today, we got a letter from him that he's okay with it. So that step is done. So we are meeting informally with the building inspectors to make sure that we talk to them. And if they have any issues, we address it. The next step is that we have estimate to go to final estimate. That's gone to the construction manager and our estimator, which we anticipate having it next week. And then we'll, as a team, reconcile it to make sure if there are any issues or something we need to address it. Following that, we have informal meeting with the state on March 24th. That meeting, we have set it up so we can review the documents with the state person, Kermit, to make sure that when we go for final approval, there are no hiccups. If there are any issues, he can tell us. So all the paperwork, and that's why we try to get some paperwork from you to sign off, sign off, so we can put it together. We'll have three more forms to come for you.
Okay.
But those forms will come when we come to the board for final approval, because it has to be signed by all the local officials. The estimate has to be prepared on a form from Newfield. So when we come to you on that board approval, that's the time we'll ask you to sign those papers. They will come by. There are three more forms left. Officially, we'll go for approval, local approval, on March 31st. That's officially that they approve it. And with their approval, they'll sign that EDO form. And then we'll come to you for a board approval in April the 5th. Once.
Would they, April?
April 5th. That's your Monday meeting. That's how I say that. Once you approve it, we'll ask the building committee to have a special meeting on April 7th for them to approve it. Then they sign it. Then we'll go to the state on April 12th for their final approval. Once they review with us, they may have some comments that we have to address it. If there are no comments, they will turn around and say, we are okay with you guys. You can go out to bed. Once we get that, then we'll come to the building committee and say that we have approval from the state. So the building committee will tell Kevin, advertise it, go out to bed. Then we go out to bed. Once we go out to bed, we anticipate tentative dates to advertise April 24 to April 27. And the bidding period will be about April 28 to May 27. Once we get the bids in, we'll have Newfield, the building committee, Kevin, and we'll sit down with the potential bidders to make sure that the scope wise, there are no issues, and we'll make the recommendations. Once the building committee approves the trades, we are off and running. So we have a tight schedule, but we have on schedule to move forward with all the dates. So so far, we have no hiccups.
What does the schedule have for groundbreaking? What are you looking for?
The groundbreaking anticipated when the school is out.
And completion and construction?
I think it's December of following year. It's 18 months, right?
Correct, yes.
18 months is the completion. But we are hopeful that the bidding climate is very favorable right now, so we'll get good prices. We are hopeful. And Kevin, you have any questions for us or anybody else?
No, I'm just asking the board if they have any questions.
Anybody has any questions, please ask. We'll leave the boards here, you know.
Sure.
Are there any like overwhelming site concerns? I know that the grading on the current site is.
No, that has been addressed.
Okay.
That's why I said we met with Trattier, the city engineer, and he had like 28 comments. And we met with him for two and a half hours on Zoom.
Yep.
And went through every item, and most of his concern was the drainage.
On the lower field.
We have prepared a detention system to take care of it. And after the meeting goes over and provided all the documents to him, and then he signed off on it.
Is that what the, on the, I'm just curious for the detention.
The detention costs are back here.
Okay.
It's all underground detention system.
Yep.
And what that does is that when the water comes, we are supposed to have a zero drainage.
Yep.
So that water gets detained into the system. So when it goes to the street, it doesn't go, it slows down and then goes slowly to the street. But we had considerable meetings with Trattier.
Questions? And if you have questions along the way, I'm sure they'd be more, Kevin, Smalley's gonna be jumping in, they'd be more than happy to help.
If anybody has questions, please refer to Kevin, and Kevin can send it to us, and we'll be happy to answer it. Any questions here?
Yeah, if the project goes on, as you've been on length, the project, I'm sure plenty of questions will arise, but just send them to me, I'll get them answered for you. There's a lot going on. See, Newfield as well, do you want to speak a little bit about your role?
Yeah, currently, we're working with Castle Booze. We've received the construction documents to go through our constructability review just to see on our end if there's something we see that physically, you know, couldn't be built, or maybe a more efficient way to do it. So our team is working on that now. We're gonna set, as Freddie said, our estimators will reconcile with Castle's estimators, I believe, on the 17th of March is what we're targeting. So Fast and Furious, as Freddie said, very good bid market right now. We've got a lot of interest. We're getting a lot of numbers, a lot of questions. So we anticipate good coverage, and we should have a really good turnout again for you.
Sorry, just one other question.
Sure.
That back lot, is that a new entrance exit for the lower lot? Or was there an existing entrance exit?
For the lower lot?
No, the lower back lot over there.
This?
Yes. Is that an existing entrance or is that?
It's moved, but we moved it. It's been moved.
It moved up a little bit on the site.
Okay.
And that allows for parent drop off.
Yep, but it won't need a traffic study. It's nothing new.
No, no, no. We already met with the traffic engineer, traffic police officer, Mike.
Kaminski?
Kaminski.
Kaminski, okay.
We met with him, and right now, these are with Asta approval at the state level. We are waiting for their approval.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you for inviting us.
All these boards up for a little bit, with digestion?
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
They go to our Crayola.
They make good ball things. I'd like to make a motion to approve Castle Booze Associates Incorporated as Architect of Chamberlain School Renovation Project.
Second.
I appreciate the presentation, and I have absolutely no issue personally with Castle Booze or the next item, which will be Newfield construction. But I will not be voting yes for this because one thing that we, that I learned today is that Wednesday, there's a petition to, in the future, not have us vote on this process. And so we all know that this has been a battle for months to be able to have our voice heard per city ordinance, that these steps are approved by the school building committee, and then also with the input of the common council and the board of education. And so we are the ones who oversee what happens in these spaces we will occupy. And it makes absolutely no sense for people to not see the value of our input and to continue to see what has happened over the few months as an inconvenience rather than us participating in our role of overseeing taxpayer dollars to quite an extent, as we know. You know, there was a concession of not having an outside manager. That's something that has never happened before, that was not justified. And rather than ever being justified, it was just pushed back that we actually didn't even have to approve it, rather than sort of giving the rationale for it, which is what I think most of the board was expressing at the time was an issue. And so I know last month, there were questions asked also about what the process was to hire an architect, construction manager, owner's representative, the number of applicants, what was the rubric used. None of this has been presented to us. And so at that time, when some of us on the board had those same questions, we were told Alderman Chris Anderson submitted a petition, and we should be hearing about that. So today also, we found out that position was rerouted incorrectly, took about a month to be routed to us, the same people who still don't know, because we were never told any of this stuff. And so I'm not sure if that was an accident, if it's, or you know, whatever game or something is being played, but I cannot in good conscience vote for something on behalf of taxpayers. And we're so fortunate to be getting, thanks to our delegation, a huge reimbursement from the state on this, but obviously, those are also still our state tax dollars. When none of this has been answered, and the school building committee has just basically refused to be transparent about it, no matter how we went about it. So again, I have no problem with, you know, hopefully, this is resolved, this is who we move forward. I know there was a mention of possibly having a special meeting, you know, and it was kind of understood that we would have all that info for this meeting, and that's why it would be okay. And none of that happened. So that, for me personally, is my reason for voting no on this today.
Board members?
Through you to either the superintendent or Mr. Dion, I was just wondering if they could shed any light or if they have received any information to date towards that request of what the process was, what the rubric was, or anything like that.
As far as petition from Alderman Anderson, and we received, gosh, I gotta tax mic. You're looking to see if we have those documents, and it was my understanding the school building committee has those documents. And while we did share Helen Talaj, and again, Ray Moore, who was our former director, she typically would take minutes of these meetings. Whether or not she has these documents, it should have been routed through the school building committee, I think is the point that Dr. Sims is trying to make. It was not. Ultimately, it'll probably come back in again to the back door to one of our staff members to say, what did the minutes show? But I don't know that they're gonna have copies of the routing, of the, excuse me, the rubrics. I don't know that. That's really a school building committee. And so that's where we are now with that. Did I misspeak at all? Yeah?
No, as far as the intent and a lot of the questions in the petition, the school building committee will have to answer those, how the process went. And then we'll reach out to other people. We need to get the documentation.
Just because Biznet has Helen Talalage's email as, send me that document. So for us not to have those documents is a little odd. Like, why would we not have them on a Google Drive? Have them somewhere where they're accessible with that rubric? We did it for Datto. I don't know that we don't. I'm not saying we don't. I'm saying I don't know that we don't. This was, you know, this will probably come across Kevin's desk. If it didn't today, it will.
I started this afternoon, we'll take a look starting tomorrow morning, but many other questions have to be answered through the SBC and other individuals that were there at the time that actually were at the interview. Their process.
While I agree with Dr. Sims's frustrations with the process or lack of transparency of the process, and I also feel that, you know, if nothing else, what we have gone through the past several months has highlighted a major deficiency that exists in how we handle these projects, that honestly, I don't think ever really came to light in the past because there was not any contention. Like, it was a more amicable relationship. And I think when that was strained, these, you know, problems that existed became more apparent. And I liken it to other things in our systems that may be broken, that we mend and try to improve going forward. I will personally be voting yes this evening because I feel like moving this project forward is the right direction to go at this time. That's not saying that anything that was done with regards to bringing us to this point was done in the right way. But I do feel like, at this point, moving forward with this project is in the best interests of the students and the district. But I would hope that we would advocate and work for a clearer, fairer, more transparent process as we go forward with our other bids and other processes, because this is something that has come up, you know, multiple times. It came up when we went to bid out for Datto, and it's something that we are definitely looking to improve. This one adds wrinkles, because it's not just on us. It's also on the common council to do their part, and the school building committee to do their part to make this process transparent, clear, and forward. And realistically, we have the least amount of authority in that. The, you know, what binds the school building committee is set by the common council through ordinance, this common coun- This common council has the bonding approval. Our role in this is often not trivial, but it is, we don't have the big sticks. But I do feel like this is a solid plan that's been presented for going forward with this project. And I think, you know, for me, getting this project going is a very important step.
Any other board members? Tina, do you have your hand up or are you?
I'm not sure if she can hear you.
Tina, do you have your hand up? You're on mute. You're on mute. There you go. Tina, it's really cute. It's asking me if I'm talking. That's really cute. To answer your question, no ma'am, I did not have a question. I was actually just trying to read in the other screen exactly what the message was in response to, from Alderman Anderson. So I believe if I read it correctly, Alderman Anderson was basically saying he's not the person to ask. Is that correct?
No, he was asking.
He was the one who asked.
Gotcha.
It was sent to us, yeah.
The way it works is that Alderman submit petitions, they go to the mayor. And from the mayor, they get sent to whichever department would have the information. But rather than sending it to the school, school building committee, they send it to us and it took a month to get to us, so.
I got you. I appreciate it. Okay, so the question, so basically the answer, the questions that you were asking still have not been answered. Am I hearing that correctly?
The questions that Alderman Anderson answered have not been answered.
Asked.
Asked, I mean, have not been answered, yes.
He has not been answered. Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Any other board members who would like discussion?
I mean, if, if millennial board members.
I was just gonna echo, I was gonna actually echo Nick and Violet.
Yeah.
But in, in light of our children and getting the school actually started and building, I would be a yes. But I'm in agreement with Violet that we have to be clear on the process and more transparent.
Yeah, I completely agree, but again, the petition that we were just made aware of today does not give the spirit of we're going to be more transparent. It's the spirit of we're going to cut you out even more so that you're not a nuisance in when we're trying to move these things forward. And so, you know, in the end, it does come from, you know, the, the city council approves the money and it's the city's money. But when things don't go right in the process, they come back to us. And so very recently, the same SBC voted no to giving us $300,000 to fix the windows in a different project that did not turn out the way they should have or was conducive to our COVID needs at the moment. And so that had to come from our own budget and we already know we're the second lowest funded district in, in the entire state. And so, so that came back on us. And then we're currently asking for that $500,000 set aside for us to address some ADA issues. And that, you know, has received a little pushback. I know that it's on the agenda for Wednesday and hopefully their questions will be answered. But it wasn't, you know, it hasn't been like an easy, yes, here it is and we're here to support you. And so if it, if, if we're not given that, again, we're using some of possibly COVID relief money. Yes, it's a lot more of it than we've ever had, but it's meant to address some really substantial issues that we know are coming out of this. It's not meant to address those things. And so on the front end, yes, that's where the, you know, that's who controls it and that's where the money is. But on the back end, all the repercussions are on us, including monetary. So I just, you know, wanted to address that.
May I ask a question? Is that a, was that a petition or is that just something that we read in the newspaper? Cause I didn't get a chance to read the article.
I found it in the paper and then I went to try to find it and so it is.
It is a resolution, okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's for the SBC to also be able to be exempt from the 6:00 PM meetings so that they can go back to holding them early where people can't attend again.
Thank you. I didn't get a chance to read it yet. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that wasn't in the paper, that piece of the resolution.
Okay, so that's a different subject than the issue of.
It's.
It's before us. So any other board members have questions or comments before we put this to a vote? Okay. All in favor of approving Castle Booze as the architect on the project? Are we doing these one thing, one time? Yes, okay. Castle Booze is the architect on the project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two opposed?
Opposed.
Three opposed? Do you want to, this is a roll call so that we can keep track of this.
Ms. Dawkins?
I'm standing.
Mr. Kane?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Listrow?
Yes.
Ms. Berger?
No.
Ms. Reyes?
No.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Sanz?
No.
Dr. Schitt?
No.
Mr. Lurschier?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
The vote is five ayes, four noes, one abstentions.
Okay. And now we'll move on to the next one, which is Newfield Construction.
Motion to approve Newfield Construction Incorporated as construction manager for Chamberlain School Renovation Project.
Second.
I'm just gonna say that my, my concerns around this are the same. I, I imagine that Ms. Sims has the similar concerns as well, sorry, Dr. Sims has similar concerns as well. And yeah, I, as frustrated as I am about the moves that are happening, potentially the moves that are being made at the city side and the common council, it's, it's just frustrating. It's really frustrating that there are people actively trying to make the process less transparent, less open, less forthright. And I support anyone who want, who wishes to vote against this as a form of protest. I don't know necessarily if that in the end accomplishes, you know, what we're looking for. But I hope we can find some other avenues to address those concerns and inequities. Cause it definitely is not in the best interest of the children long-term and the taxpayers and the district for the Board of Education to be completely removed from this process. So I, I do, as much as I hate what is happening there, I feel it's a separate issue from this one thing in front of us, though they are tied together.
Anybody else want to speak?
Same stuff.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Can we do this the easy way and say, did anybody change their vote? Okay, I think we know how the vote came out. Okay. So the motion carries. Let's move on to the.
Motion to approve policy 3432.1 Self Insurance Fund Policy.
Second.
Quick question. Did we ever approve the consent?
That is after old business.
Oh, we're on old. We went back to old.
We went back to old.
We're scrolling through new and I'm like, hold on.
We still have two people here. I didn't know.
Old.
They're item C.
Item C, okay.
That's the ADA thing. That's what I.
Oh, okay, I apologize. I don't, there was no second on mine. Was there? Oh, good. I'll instead make a motion that we move item 5C to be our next item of business. Approve owner's representative agreement between Construction Advocacy Professionals LLC and the New Britain Board of Education for the high, New Britain High School ADA Compliance Project.
Second.
All in favor of taking it out?
Okay, so all in favor of moving the side of the agenda into the.
Aye.
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 Good. Any opposed? All right.
Do you have any large placards to add to our plaque?
They're actually gonna stack them double so you can't see anything.
Giant House of Cards.
We're gonna build a forest. So back in 2007, the state identified ADA violations and deficiencies. Since 2007, prior to my time, those, the low hanging fruit, as I call it, has been taken care of. But there are still a few more items that need to be corrected and these are much more expensive items. That being said, some of the dates have been, were pushed farther down the road than the state wants. So the state has said it is time to correct all of these deficiencies and get them done as soon as possible. That being said, the state would like a timeframe. They would like to know what our plan is. They would like to have design and development and make sure that the funding as well as the plan to correct all these ADA violations is being taken care of as quickly as possible. And we want to do that because we do not want to interfere with any of our other state funding that we receive. So since this has been going on from 2007, it's best that we correct it and we correct it as quickly as possible. That being said, the projects that are left are very labor and time inclusive. We need some support. We need some help to get that done in order to satisfy the state's requests. That being said, Construction Advocacy has done audit work for us as well in the closing of some of the state projects. They have a lot of extensive experience dealing with state processes, also dealing with general contractors and understanding ADA violations and codes as well as current codes, which have changed a little bit since 2007. And the goal is at the end of this project to make sure that we are fully up to code at our high school. The city had some work done on their fields. I think Mr. Smithley can speak to some of the work that's been done there. There were issues that have been corrected. If you want to add anything to this project? You did an update in December, correct?
Yeah, correct. Just as Mr. Dion mentioned, since 2007, we've been tackling these projects, the low hanging fruit as best we can, both on the city and the Board of Ed side. It's tough to meet some of these requirements that the ADA requires. So some of the easier things we've done were the baseball field renovations where our baseball teams utilize the fields. And just so everybody understands, the requirement to comply with the ADA falls on the school board's back because our students and athletes use the city facilities. So it becomes a back and forth a little bit. But in, in the interim, the veteran stadium is renovated, the bleachers are completely ADA accessible and the locker rooms were brought up to compliance as well. Like I said, the baseball field, and I know on the chopping block this year for, under the Parks and Rec budget, they do plan to make the tennis courts ADA accessible as well. It's, it's the simplest, most funny things, like a little path from the parking lot that makes it compliant. But that is on the books for Parks and Rec to complete this year as well.
Didn't we do something in the auditorium too to make it ADA compliant?
We've done a couple of things in this building. In the science labs, one station in each genre of science was made accessible. So there's a sink accessible for students. In the auditoriums, there was a hearing assistance system installed, same thing in the cafeteria and in the media center. So little stuff along the way has been brought up to code.
But now larger items such as our bathrooms are not ADA compliant. So these are our door frames, doorways are not large enough, which means you have to expand them. So it's the larger projects, it's the ones that more impact, it's not just buying furniture and it's not just painting and adding signage at this point. It's actual demolition, it's actual renovation. That's where we're at. And that's, and these are projects that take a lot of expertise and time planning as well as this is for learning to continue. We need to know when we can do these projects, what can be done and at the same time, make sure that our bathrooms specifically are ADA accessible. You want to introduce yourself a little bit more about the project?
Hello, everybody. On screen, I'm Antoneto at Construction Advocacy. I'm the owner of the company. We're proudly a woman owned firm. We have joined your team, hopefully continue to join your team in helping with this process. So we do have some larger code violation projects here. I'm also Connecticut Licensed Building Official, so I can help you with those code violations easier than trying to find somebody to do that. Our goal here is to keep the architect under wraps. There are projects that need to take place. There are big projects. We just don't want them to be gigantic projects. There are things that can be modified here easily that we just need a small design. We don't want the architect to kind of blow things out of proportion and make it bigger than we need to.
There will be no flyovers.
There'll be no flyovers.
We're not gonna spend the money on flyovers.
And I promise there'll be lots of communication. So my goal is to communicate with your team just to make sure everybody is aware of what's happening and where it's happening. We want to make sure that the students are actually comfortable in the space. We don't want any construction work to affect anyone going to school. The goal is to get a lot of this work done during the summertime and to make sure the Office School Construction Grants is happy with our progress. So my role is to make sure all that happens and happens on a timely basis so you guys can get back up and ready in September and to make sure that we stay at a low budget as much as we can because obviously these can cost a pretty penny. We want to make sure we keep that under control.
And you have an ADA specialist on your team? You brought through here, you brought.
So Lenny and I, my husband, Lenny Roy, actually has been doing this for years as well. So we both toured the entire building. We assessed every item on that list and a few additional items that we found. You guys had saw that list of 12 items a couple of meetings ago. So that incorporated everything that we need to make sure we touch one way or another to make sure it's ADA compliant. So.
There's a lot of moving parts to this type of project and unfortunately the state has, has given us the ultimatum that it's time to get this corrected and get it fully corrected. Having a report still out there from 2007 that has slowly been worked at, I think rightfully the state is ready to see this to completion. But that being said, there is, there's code, there's ADA code, there's building code as well as design, as well as doing the planning to make sure that we can do it in, in the summer season. So we don't interfere with learning and we're talking about a lot of demolition and a lot of disruptive noises and activities. So in order to do that in such a condensed timeframe and find the specialty of people that can do it without having too many moving parts, I think we're actually fortunate to have somebody that can in-house can one shop do all this. And I, I think it's very beneficial for us to finally get past these 07 ADA compliances and move on with other bigger, larger projects that are more necessary.
One more thing to add, so like I said about the communication, so we are gonna provide you with weekly reporting. It basically is a report that's gonna have photo documentation of everything that's happened and things that are going to happen. So that way everybody stays informed of what's, you know, going on, the principal is well aware and everybody just understands the entire progress of the project.
Yes, information will be key, constant information and updates. And we'll, we'll keep everybody informed. Any questions?
So, yeah, just a question, sort of your role in this is as project manager or as construction, as general contractor, what is it?
So we're basically gonna be your owner's representative where we're watching your back to make sure this project doesn't get blown out of proportion. And we're also monitoring the progress of the design and the work itself. So we watch everything that happens at every moment. We watch the design to make sure that design is good. We watch the construction to make sure you're getting what you're paying for. So we're there the entire time of the project.
And making sure the communication with the state maintains and that we're giving them the right information that they need in order to, to move past and clear these projects. And that's really important to make sure that we let them know every step of the way that we're making progress. They want to see progress and we want to show them that we're making progress and we're making quick progress. So that's another big component.
So do we have an architect or are we bidding for?
At this point, we're still in the design. We, we don't have an architect. We, we're looking at a general contractor. And as Antoneta said, a lot of these projects we may or may not need. Some of them, there's many projects, some of them we can do in-house with a just general contractor, other we will need an architect. You know, you can use an architect for everything, but do you need that as long as we're complying with code and the state is satisfied with the, the results of what we're presenting, then an architect may not be needed. And some other projects, you will need an architect, the state will acquire that. Then an architect may not be needed. And some other projects, you will need an architect. The state will require that. So that's, their role is to balance that, and that'll keep our costs down. It's like pay for legal fees if you don't need them.
Correct.
So my next question, which was going to be, so the expertise that you bring can potentially save money in that we don't have to go outside to ask about the compliance issues themselves and the codes?
Correct.
Because you already bring that?
Correct.
And then would shorten the time based on knowing kind of who the people are who can address these concerns already?
Absolutely.
Is that correct? I'm trying to, okay.
So if working with both the state and your code officials within the city, we're gonna make sure all of that is addressed and everything is, you know, everything's gonna be in-house. So we don't have to go outside to hire again to make sure somebody's approving, reviewing, and so on. It's all done in-house.
So we don't mobilize, say, for July demolition or renovation, and then find out that we're not meeting more current code, or we haven't gotten the right permits yet, and then delaying that and finding out that we cannot start construction, and now we're pushed into September and school will be starting. So that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
I do have a question. So when we redid veterans, baseball field, the other things, did we bring in a, what is it? Owner's project?
The Public Works and Parks and Rec contracted and did, did those renovations. I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. I would just be curious, because I'm...
I'm like to bet we used our own in-house civil engineers for it.
Exactly.
It depends though, because I know there are lots of projects that they go out.
And the work isn't...
We have a on-call engineer.
The work isn't the same of an existing building of this size and age. You know, those were fields. Those were stadiums. So the work is not apples.
So when we did the outside stairs, where are we?
To the tennis court?
Did we bring in an architect? Where are we? The main entrance to the gym.
Main entrance.
Did we bring in an owner's project? We probably had an architect.
No, Ray managed that himself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions yet?
I know that this, this type of work probably falls under the areas that are exempted from requiring a bid per our board policy, based on just for the board's application. How did we come to land on this provider for the services? Were there other quotes asked for, for similar services from other vendors? I know we have a working relationship, but, you know, as we talk about being good fiduciaries, you know, the idea of also making sure that we practice what we preach.
True. So this project, I would say, my predecessor took all the dates and put them till December of 2020 as being completed, and no one knew. And we were conformed by the state, thinking early November, Kevin? Early November that we had been informed that all these dates for 2007 ADA violations had been pushed till December 2020, and we were gonna get them done. And how are you gonna get them done by then? We were pushed up against it. We had a reply. They were threatening to withhold some funding. We have a lot of projects in the works. We have a lot of need in this district, and we need to get this completed. So at the time, we have a prior relationship with the other projects. They have a relationship with the state. They're, they know school constructions grants. They're able to, they were able to reach out to them and tell them to, that they were working on it and give us some breathing room. I think they pushed it off till, we gave them a quick reply, and then we had another meeting in January. Their expertise is not only just in the ADA. Their expertise is actually having worked with OSCGR construction grants and having that ability to be that mediator for us that we don't currently have. And being, they didn't want to hear that those dates were pushed by somebody else. Those are the dates they were given. Those are the dates they were holding us to. So time is of the essence of this.
And if you want to add, I mean, basically, the state had pointed us into, you know, the direction of you. I mean, especially when we were closing out projects, that was first fact of that. They're someone that the state goes to to help districts who have issues like we have as far as lack of closing out projects, and now with this ADA compliance. So, you know, it was based on the state recommendation.
We've been working with the state. We've had local meetings with the state. We need to get back to them with even much more detail. Time is of the essence, I will just say. They, they are serious at this time, I think. They want to make sure that these 2007 ADA violations are corrected in 2021. So this is, they recommended, we've experienced, we've had your, used your experience. And I think using that time of the essence, as well as their in-house ability, this is the way to go if we want to correct this all within 2021.
Could you have a little more time, maybe two? So for total, to close out projects plus this owner's project management, it'd be $131,240.
I actually want to add, just before you ask the question. As I mentioned, we are a small, woman-owned firm. We really care about our schools and our students. We build a lot of schools. We put a lot of extra effort into building all of our schools. When Kevin had actually reached out to us, we came in and did that entire assessment free of charge, because I knew you guys needed it. I knew you were looking at this. So the audit is separate. So the audits were completed. They were completed in less than a month. That is a minimal charge. That's a different charge than this. So this is for both phases of the project through the entire completion. So I just wanted to add that we, we really look forward to making these schools great. So that's, that's our goal.
So maybe to piggyback on that then, because here's where I'm confused.
Sure.
So there's several projects that were outstanding, but then there was an assessment to see if they were still outstanding? I'm so confused on that.
There is an open list of ADA compliance items that Ray was working on while he was here. He had put a completion date, as Kevin mentioned, as December 2020.
Okay.
December 2020 came and left, and those items were not completed. Kevin, I believe somebody from the state had reached out to you.
Dr. Adrian Wood had reached out to us, their ADA specialist, and he wanted to have an update on them, exactly where they stood and where the, what the plan was, what had been completed. That documentation, Mr. Smidley worked with myself, completed the update, and then we provided that to the state. But the second part of that from the state is, now where do we go and what's the plan to remedy the larger items that are on that list?
Look, aren't we free?
The assessment where we came in to look at the items to make sure they were actually completed, and then you have additional items that need to be upgraded.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. So...
And just as a tangent, I want to preface this by saying, please understand, nothing against any corporation. I honestly am really thankful for the work that was done on closing out the projects. This entire issue with the ADA compliance in these projects is completely separate from the previous issue, which was the projects that we had already finished, such as Smalley and all the Lincoln, all those renovation projects that had never been properly closed out with the state.
Correct.
So none of those projects were at all related to these ADA issues?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So you know what? My apologies. I was reading the contract wrong. I was reading it. It was all-inclusive. So it's $131,000 just for these ADA projects?
Correct.
I read the contract wrong.
And just so you're aware, so I have to assign a dollar value, so we have something to approve. But we do calculate our hours. So at the end of the project, if there are unused hours, that money comes back to you. So we don't spend, so I have to put some sort of threshold so you guys have something to approve. We don't go over that threshold unless something major happens in the project. Usually, as an owner's rep, there's never a change order to our, our contract. And you should know that for future. As an owner's rep, there's usually never a change order to a contract. So, you know, we do calculate those hours. So at the end of the project, if we owe you money back, you get that money back.
So just, so this is a incurred but not to exceed, like estimate?
Correct.
Not to, okay, thank you. That's...
Miss Antonetta?
Better than lump sum.
I think Tina has something.
Oh, Tina does have her hand raised.
Officially.
She used the button in everything!
No, because I'm a firm believer in not spooking people. Just if you're like me and have worked extensively around tools, you know not to spook anybody. And so I know that I'm behind this young lady over here who's back I see, so I just want to make sure that I was, because I don't know in what direction I'm going. So here's my question. Prior to this project right over here that they're bringing you on as a consultant, what other, what other projects for the city of New Britain have you worked on? For the Consolidated School District of New Britain? I'm only asking that because from the tone of the questioning, it's almost like this is the first time they're meeting you? Is this the first time they're meeting you?
Yes, it is. It is. So I have been...
And so...
Go ahead, sorry.
No, 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 no. So I was just curious as to what projects the board has approved with you that this is the first time they're meeting you?
So we have been working in the background, completing your audits on older projects that have been open within the city for 10-plus years. So this is the first time that I'm meeting this entire group. So we have not been hired on any other school construction projects, but we have done strictly just audits.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, on past audits, you, so the gentleman over there just called you on the phone and said, hey, can you close up these audits? And you came and closed them up. So I'm just trying to figure out where the connection is, where now on this particular project, but you're referencing past projects. Clearing them up would come at a, at a price, right? Because your work isn't free.
Antonetta, let Mrs. Serra speak.
Yeah, can I answer Tina? Can you hear me from, can you hear me? Give me a excuse to take off my mask for two minutes. Sorry. So where to begin? And I think I could sit and, sit and talk to you for quite some time to fill you in on a story. But two, two, a year and a half ago, when Ray Moore said he was going to retire, we also had a death in the department. With that death, Kevin Kane and I said, oh my goodness, all of the information is gone now. What do we do next? So we reached out to the State Department to say, are there projects that are left open? And when we mean open projects, we mean building projects, former school building projects. To which they came back, and it wasn't in a day. It took a little bit of time, to tell us that there were 12 projects. Am I right?
Yeah.
12 projects that were never closed out. Closing out a project, and I'm gonna speak in layman's terms. Don't ask me to get more technical. Closing out projects basically is saying, we've done all the reports. We're done with GAFNE. We've, we've made it look beautiful. We're done. Everyone has come. We've reconciled everything, and we're gonna put a button and zip this baby up, and it's done. Our former facilities director did not close any projects. This was a problem. I reached out to the mayor to let her know that we had multiple opened projects, but that we were committed to getting these closed. Well, as you can imagine, it was quite a lot of work. So at that time, the state offered us this service, Construction Advocacy, to come in and help us. They are used across the state of Connecticut to deal with issues that happen like this. So we were gifted, and I don't want to say gifted because we did pay, but we were told by the State Department, use these folks. They're going to help you close out all of your projects. Because the other thing that was looming was a retirement that was coming up. And my thing was, we need you to stay on a little bit of extra time, Mr. Moore, for a few months, while Antonetta is working on closing these projects, because you know where the paperwork is kept. Now remember, we had a 100% vacuum of staff in that department, because that department consisted of Mr. Moore and his assistant. So that is how we were introduced to them. They did the work for us. And Kevin and I can sit with you at another time to give you more detail. Antonetta, I'm sure would be sitting, happy to sit with you also to just give you the, the timeline of project closeouts.
And that brought in the $2.5 million to the city?
Oh, right. So that was the best part.
That's the best part. I had to say that part.
So we, when we closed out, well, we are closing out all of the projects. It takes time. Two of the projects did get closed. They're zipped up, done, and that money went over to the city.
So the state was essentially holding the last payment on these things until the jobs were closed. Now that they're closed, the, the city has gotten $2.5 million.
And more to come.
Reimbursed with more to come, yeah.
And more to come.
And one last piece, Ms. Antonetta, is there are often times when there may be a vendor or some other service that the board has to approve the contract, where we may not sit down and meet the person face-to-face. Because that is something that's done, and the contract comes to us for approval, but it's not always something where we have a face-to-face issue. I think in, when we previously engaged this company, it was through Mr. Kane and his contacts at the time. So we had not met, met with them face-to-face.
So has this particular young lady and her company been paid for other projects in the past?
Yes. Yes.
The, for the...
I think so they, so, so you have a working knowledge of the district. You have a working knowledge of, and I understand advocacy quite well. That part of it's not, not foreign to me. And having worked in construction, having inspectors come on my site and inspect my team's work is not a problem. I understand that part. What I'm trying to piece together is that there was that gap of, wait a minute, how'd you get here? And they're just meeting you first, and you've gotten paid by them in the past. Do you see what I'm saying? That's the part where I'm going, hold on a second. Wait a minute. So you're gonna, you're charged up to $1,000, what is it? $131,000 and change, right, roughly? For the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the ADA bringing up to speed on projects that were already done but weren't done right?
No.
Am I putting that kind of in layman's terms?
No. These have never been done. These were things that were pushed off.
These were projects here at New Britain High School.
Separate from...
Separate from any of those other construction projects, where this building is an old building, and there were things that, when it was built, were, didn't meet ADA.
Okay, so prior to, that were just left without being done and no one knew of it, it just kind of went through, and now we're at the cutoff date. Should have already been done, missed the punch list, and now needs to get done.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that basically it?
Yeah.
Right?
Wasn't even, wasn't even ever on a punch list, but yeah.
They're just old violations that have never been dealt with.
Okay, so if her charge is $131,000, what's the full projected price for the project? Phase 1, Phase 2, to get a yes for everything?
Can I answer that one?
Yep.
Okay. So the first phase of our project is for the design-build portion, where we're gonna come in with the construction, the general contractor, and bring in an architect if we need to, to be able to evaluate every item within the building that we have, already have reviewed as an issue. So once we're through that phase, that should take us to, beginning to middle of May, we'll be able to come back to the committee with a dollar value of construction to actually fix those items. So until we get through that first phase of realizing the entire demolition that needs to happen, the signs that need to be changed, every one of those 12 items that's on the list, we'll be able to have a full estimate of how much those items are gonna cost. So in May, we'll be able to come back to the committee with a dollar value, whether it is $100,000, whether it is a million. We don't know at this point. And then that's what we're calling Phase 2. Once the committee approves that dollar value, Phase 2 will start to correct those items.
Would you estimate they're over $500,000 worth of work?
With the bathroom renovations, most likely.
Okay.
So the bathroom, just so the entire committee knows, the bathroom renovations and the auditorium ADA accessibility are probably the two largest tasks on the entire list. The other items are little minutia items that we can fix here and there that don't cost a lot of money. Those are our big-ticket items that we really need to focus on. Those are our big-ticket items that we really need to focus on.
So even as an advocate, you don't already have... And I understand that it's based on whoever gets approved and everything else, I get that part of it. But there isn't like a roundabout that gets you closer, that's pretty much the estimate that you're giving right now? Now, like, it could run you up to this much, but it's gonna ballpark around this much for a bathroom? I'm just saying, because as an advocate, you would already come in the door going, it's gonna cost about this much, that's how I'm basing my hours, that I'm guessing it's gonna cost me. To come up with your figure, you would've already known about, roundabout, how much it's going to be. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, my hourly rate is $52. I already know it's gonna take me about eight hours to do that. See what I'm saying?
Right. So Tina, if you don't mind, if you don't mind.
Sure.
They have to go up. She's a construction advocate, like, she will bring everybody together. She's almost like a project manager, right? So she can't give us a price until they actually go and actually look at the bathroom and say, whoa, whoa, you need to do X, Y, and Z to do that. So she can't give us a price today. Would I love to have a price today before I go in front, Wednesday? Absolutely.
Check your email.
But we're not gonna have it.
Check your email.
Right.
Good.
Okay.
Right, so that's, yeah, she's like a project manager of all of these ADA projects. Now, she's not gonna be doing the construction, her company doesn't do the construction.
I understand what Tina, I understand what Tina, what you're asking. So we could provide a roundabout estimate, but until we actually get into the space and do some destructive testing, we don't know if there's asbestos in the space, we don't know if there is a steel beam in that place. So for me to give you some sort of roundabout estimate and then come back and it's higher, would be unfair. So we wanna make sure we have all our bases covered. So that's why we need the month or so timeframe to be able to evaluate everything and get you a real price.
Absolutely. Now, I'm just trying to make sure that I wrap my head around your role and the role, do you know what I'm saying? Because there's a lot of moving parts.
Absolutely.
And I get that. I understand, time-sensitive, and no one is singing ADA compliance louder than me, let me assure you. So I just wanna make sure that at least I'm understanding where you're the moving part in that. I get this, I understand your point, I get that part of it. I've just never had an advocate on a job site, forgive me, I just never have. That doesn't mean you don't exist, that doesn't mean that you don't have value, clearly $131,000. But I just, I just was trying to understand better your role and how you fit into that. And it's not cutting away from you. I'm just trying to understand you.
The name of the business is Construction Advocates.
She's not an advocate, it's the name of her company.
No, 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 I get that part of it, I understand that, I understand that, trust me. But it's just a matter of saying, okay, you know, I got you.
Okay.
I do. I got you.
Do you have anything?
I heard it. I had a question, I'm trying to sort of come back to it, because some of it escaped me. But then also partial comment, I know we have seen you before. So you have presented to us when we were in the other building, was it that it was a committee? Yeah, but I'm like, I know you presented to us.
I think you're remembering the facility master plan that we had come in with an architect.
Okay.
To evaluate your other buildings.
Right, so for the other projects that you did do work for us, you didn't do it like as a ghost person over here. We absolutely, like, I know, I remember you. So, okay, so we've met you, you've done other projects, and you're the state-recommended firm to do this work. My question was around the actual, like, non-compliance, and so it's an old building, there are some old violations that we know we have to address. But what I think I'm also hearing is that there's concern that if those were just done, and then they come look, they might actually find new ones, because the guidelines change.
That is my role, so...
So that's what I'm, okay, so that's what I'm making sure, so that's part of it.
I have the latest and greatest code updates at all times.
Latest and greatest.
Latest and greatest. So I'm gonna make sure that something that is revised or repaired is not out of date, because then that just puts you backwards, that's not gonna help you going forward.
So repaired to two-years-ago's sheet that said, repair this, could actually not be right, right now?
I am also on the state committee of approving the next building code that's coming out. So I already know the new codes that are coming out, so I'm gonna make sure none of those items actually affect you and your building, so that another year, when that new code gets published, you're now going back and spending more money and changing it again. So we're gonna make sure you're at least 10, 15, 20 years okay on all items. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm processing it, but I hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? No, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries.
Nice meeting you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go back.
Would it be fair to request just like a two-minute bathroom recess?
Yes, let's do that. We are recessed for five minutes. Okay, it is 8:22, and we are reconvening after a brief recess. And our next item is...
A motion to approve policy 3432.10 self-insurance fund policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a second motion, any questions, concerns?
Refresh my memory, this is the max, I apologize, I did say I was not going to. Thank you.
She answered her own question.
I answered my own question. I did, I apologize.
Easiest question I've had this evening. They're all like that, keep 'em coming.
Right.
Okay, so, hearing no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, does anybody have, anybody wanna take anything off the consent agenda?
I would like to take A through, no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. All the way to BB, nope.
Nothing?
Okay. Hearing no objections to the consent agenda, the consent agenda's passed, let's move to new business.
Motion to approve the 2021-2022 district-wide calendar.
Second.
Yep.
I'm just going to ask for you to the superintendent, I'm assuming the assumption of this calendar is that we are back in school, five days a week, full-time.
Yes. Yes, that's our assumption right now.
Look forward to it.
Speaking as a true parent.
And a teacher.
And, oh, and a teacher, yeah.
Okay.
Can somebody tell me what page it is?
87.
I found it, I finally got to it, I've been scrolling.
So when's the last day?
June 13th.
June 13th, we all know that's a lie. It might, we don't have any smarter.
I do have a quick question, sort of addressing post-COVID, right? We now have students who are somewhat accustomed to the idea of bringing Chromebooks to and from school. Is that policy, is that practice going to continue post-COVID? And if so, do you see us potentially, if needed, using distance learning days for, you know, inclement weather or other things that might happen?
So, yes, that's an easy answer right now. Yes, I, our hope is that it will still, we will still have our students, that becomes one of the tools that they have. I know Mr. Pocov's talked about, you know, insurance for families because breakage, and, you know, really teaching our students how to care for and maintain a piece of equipment. And yes, I think, you know, as far as inclement weather goes, some days, sometimes, you just need to disconnect, so I would never want to say fall days are inclement days, that we would say it's remote learning. There's something still nice for teachers, parents, and students to have, that every once in a while, disconnect day.
Yeah. You know, and I know when we first went, I'll be the first to say, when we first went all remote and everyone, we were one-to-one, I was like, oh my god, no more snow days. But now I just go, no, they have to be able to disconnect, do their, yeah. There was nothing but going out and playing in the snow.
Right. Right. I think a balance of that, just because we're on the subject. Everybody doesn't have a yard to go play in the snow. Like, these ideas of what a beautiful, perfect snow day looks like is not the same for everyone. But it's good to have a couch too. Yeah. But a balance of it. But just to clarify, so right now, the last day of school is June 13th, unless something else happens. That's right. That is what...
Okay. Any further questions on the calendar?
I do notice there are two to be determined for Capstone and SAT. Is the SAT not available yet?
No, it's not, and we don't know that yet.
Okay, thank you.
And Capstone for this year, I thought, is it happening?
I'm gonna have to answer that, because I don't wanna speak to something I don't know.
Capstone for this year, I'm waiting for it.
Oh, that's right.
So for this current calendar, we actually don't even need that on there.
Right.
So we can strike that or whatever. To not confuse people.
Oh, is that on our current calendar still?
Yeah, because this is our current calendar.
Any further questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the calendar for next year?
Aye.
A motion for the change, to take out the Capstone, or no?
No.
Well, that, this is, we're just approving next year's calendar.
Oh, this is next year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you kidding me? I just had the whole entirely Rose Harper's vision. When's the last day of school this year?
I thought we were updating this one because of the snow day.
Oh, no, this is for... Somebody tell me what year we're in.
We're in 2022, 2020 Part 2.
2023.
March, November?
Yes, because March, last March has just continued.
All right.
So I can't answer what's the last day of school is right now, but I will let you know.
Okay, that would be...
I forgot.
That will be fantastic, because I, yeah.
Here I am, I've got nothing on the world planet. Okay.
Cancel that plane ticket, Dr. Shams.
Oh, gosh, I will come right back.
Okay. So, everybody all set that we're voting on next year's calendar? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Let's move to the next one. We've already done the next one, and the one after that, so we're on to item D.
The Policy Committee moves to approve revisions to the CSD and the harassment policies, including policy 4118.11 and 5145.50, 4118.112, 4218.112, and 5145.51. And this would also eliminate two of our existing policies, 4118.12 and 4218.12.
Second, I think.
So these revisions are being made to bring our policies around harassment and investigations of harassment in line with the current federal guidelines that were put in place, that, you know, went into effect the start of this August. So we're updating our policies to reflect changes at the federal level. At the time that we were making those revisions, Ms. Manning, through ship in Goodwin, just took a look at the broader policies, found some other things that we needed to do to bring it in alignment with the changes that have been made at the state level as well. What you have in your packet for each of these policies is first a redline version of it, followed by a clean copy. The redline version has some of the commentary along with the edits. Of the clean copy that follows is what we would be adopting.
Any questions or concerns? Is it scrolling?
Yeah, I mean, I was also there for the meeting, but, yeah, so the point is to put us up to date with what came into effect this past August, and we did that, have the conversation that, of course, there's a new administration, and so if there are changes again, and then you see these, you know, you see these policies again, and it's like, did we just look at them? Obviously, we have to be in federal compliance with Title IX and harassment and all that other stuff.
Are there any things in these that we expect to get changed?
I don't think there's been any conversation about it yet, but I think that the current administration is probably more committed to much more specific support of trans students and maybe, maybe not having quite such a high threshold for people who are being accused of harassment, but that's, I, yeah, that would all be perspective.
I would say that our current policy does, like, it's a broad one in terms of how we define harassment. So that may not change. What might change is the procedural steps of due process. So the changes that were made by the previous administration added in much more significant elements of due process for the people who were accused that did not exist before. And, you know, using the attorneys' words, not mine. Right? And it made it sort of a more onerous task on those who were doing the accusing to sort of prove their case. So whether or not that guidelines around that change, or honestly, anything might come out of the legislative session, I don't know if that's anything that's being discussed at the state level.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
Motion to postpone these policies to our April meeting for a second reading and approval.
Second.
All in favor of postponing to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item E? Yep, policy, Board Action to certify the district.
Oh, I'm looking on the consent agenda. Thank you. Oh, yes. Okay, so before I make this motion, these are two different things that we have to move and approve, so I'm gonna read them very specifically for, because I believe last time we did this, Ms. Alfano requested that we have this exact language. If I am correct about that, is Ms. Alfano on the call?
Good evening, yes, I'm on the call.
So I believe last time we did this, it was asked that we make the motion with the full text of each of the considerations as a separate motion?
That is correct.
So I will be going through this, please bear with me. I move that the Board pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Sections 10-215F, the Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutritional, nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, cul-de-sacs. stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. That was a lot.
Ms. Alfano, could you give us a very, very brief overview of what this relates to?
Absolutely. The state of Connecticut requires every school district in Connecticut to approve the motion that we will follow the Connecticut nutrition standards. So basically, that was, that's just a certification that we will do that for the 21, 22 school year. That's the first motion. The second consideration is that we will agree that any food or beverages that aren't listed and approved under the nutrition standards will not be sold during school hours, and that we approve these foods to be sold, for example, at an event or for a fundraiser. So it's just basically a certification that we will comply with all the Connecticut nutrition standards.
Could you say that last part again? You said, so outside of school hours, so say a volleyball game. Are they saying that we do not approve them, or we approve them?
They have to get them approved.
No, we're stating in the second consideration, we are stating that we are approving, for example, that we will allow exemptions for a soccer game, or a school play, or other events like that.
Okay, thank you.
So, and you said food to be sold, so birthday parties, cupcakes, that type of thing, are they not allowed anymore?
They've been allowed forever.
No, so unfortunately, when it's a child's birthday during school day, during school hours, basically, state is saying that we would not be in compliance if we had certain foods for the kids.
Okay.
And that, that includes if parents were to bring them in as well.
Okay.
Ms. Alfano, what would be the implications if, say, the board did not make these certifications towards our school lunch program as it has to do with the state?
So that would result in a loss of funding for our lunch program.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Fundraisers? Right? When we do fundraisers, that's always the question, right? If I sell candy at a fundraiser, do they have to come pick it up after school? Do they have to pick it up non-school hours? It's always a question.
So the parents would have to come in and pick them up. The child is not allowed to distribute.
Okay.
These types of foods. Yep.
I know, it's like, I was just gonna say.
It used to be, like, one of the clubs used to do a Bob Cabaret sale or something.
Yeah.
And that, you have to, the parent has to come pick that up after school hours.
Yeah. The Bob Cabaret's were the best. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I know it's just always a question when we, whenever we pass this, it's, the questions won't come up.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry.
Yep.
I did promise it was.
I expected.
All right. We exhausted this.
It's a disease, I admit it.
Okay. All in favor of approving the policies, say aye.
Aye.
I motion that the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale of students, sale to students. Let's start that one over, shall we? I move that the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale to students of items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from vending machine, vending machine or school store. An event, quotes, is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer, soccer practices, play reversal, rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held.
What? Oh, my god. Okay.
They want to be very.
From midnight.
Second.
All right.
They're lost in that.
All right. Any questions or discussion?
So you can't come by like 5:00 AM and be like.
Can't have a.
If the soccer game runs really late.
Yeah.
Gotta shut it down.
Okay. We're all getting punchy here. All in favor of this policy, so this certification, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move to the next thing.
No selling coffee before.
Okay. Is it my turn? Okay, personnel. Approve new job description and new position, request for one full-time district-wide pupil service transition specialist.
Second.
Any questions?
Yep.
Not a question, as, just as a statement for the record, I would like to point out that this is a position not located at central office and will be working with students to benefit our students.
It's the job description, not the person.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move to item D.
Okay, G. Approve new job description and new position request for 4.0 full-time district-wide pupil service assistance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes?
I would also like to point out that these positions will be working, if I, if I'm reading this correctly, with our teachers and with our students to ensure that they are getting adequate instruction and services that they need.
So, okay. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. H.
Oh, okay, so this is a motion, and I'm all, sorry, I'm right into the agenda. H. This was, it originally came to finance, but the actual purchase order was, I think, significantly higher than what came through. Sorry.
That is correct. Yeah, you are correct.
Yeah, so it's a firewall device. I think it came in at 20,000, but it's 45, so I said he would have to probably resubmit it. Or make a motion to approve. Motion.
Motion and a second. Jeff, you want to shed a little light on this?
Absolutely. So this, as mentioned, is an emergency purchase, so when it was brought initially to the board, it was in advance of the official quote to get the device. So we were through that process, understanding, and I think it was confusion of the price, and I believe we were putting the discount on what was the discounted price ultimately. So when we actually received the quote as per agreed, if it came in higher than my anticipated cost, we bring it as a new business. So, in essence, though, the, the actual device is, is part of the internal network structure, and it's an improvement from what we have, which is being taxed with the amount of extra bandwidth ultimately that we are hitting at certain points in the day. So that is why it's brought in this way, too.
Okay. Anybody have questions or concerns? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I.
Yeah, operations, aye. Make a motion to approve purchase order and bid waiver for removal of solar panels at New Britain High School. Hallelujah.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have questions, or?
Yeah, why are they removing them?
Don't work, right?
Don't work.
Really quickly, the solar panels, the way they're fixed, they're heat welded to the roof, they're like, think of it as a ravioli that's put over, and all the edges are sealed to the roof. The middle is loose. Each solar panel has wires, and so those wires go down, penetrate the roof. What's happening is those solar panels are lifting, they're defunct now, we've taken the inverters out many years ago, but they are still generating electricity, they are a safety hazard, they are a fire hazard. And actually, as those panels are lifting, as the suns come up, water is penetrating, and because those, where those cords are going in, those wires are not sealed, water is just going in. We just had about $5,000 repair at the gym, if you go to our gym, you'll see, all that is being caused by these solar panels. They need to be removed, not only for the roof integrity, the same company did the work in Nagatuck, nobody does this. I do come from Nagatuck. We have the same exec, there's only three districts, New Britain, Plaineville, and Nagatuck, that have these types of solar panels. The company is defunct, they went bankrupt, and this company actually removed all of Nagatuck. So the quality is there, they know what they're doing, it is a hazardous material, they know how to take care of it, and the contract is to remove them from the roof, seal up the roof, and actually get rid of the hazardous material, which are the panels. So for the value, what we're gonna get, we're gonna get a lot of patches on that roof, but we're gonna get roof integrity, which really is what we need, and we can't have that until these panels go.
From my reading of this, is this a cost, the contract for this is on an hourly basis not to exceed?
Yeah.
So if it, if it happens to take less, if it takes less time, we'll be under the amount.
Correct.
Thank you.
So they will, they went on, they looked at these solar panels, again, they've done this in the past, there is no learning, because they've already done it. Actually, one of the, one of the men that works for GL Pass, that actually is the one of the installers, who did most of the installs, so he knows how they go.
Is this an issue with other solar panels that are on the rest of the building?
All the solar panels that are heat welded to the roof, that technology isn't used anymore. If you look at some of the newer solar panels in the district, they're all, we call them ballasted system, they're on a frame, and they're weighted, because nobody heat welds anymore, the technology just wasn't, isn't there, and then you see what we're dealing with now at the time. Those panels, though they've been disconnected from the grid, still generate power of 770 kilowatts. If that's, the protection on that cracks and you're standing in a puddle, you will have electrocution. We need to remove them. I will say, in my past job in Nagatuck, we started to get burn holes, because there was nowhere for power to go, and over time, on the hottest days, you'll start to get burning. And we don't see that up here yet, but it's just, it's best for this price to remove them off, and at the same time, ensure that, and when we lift them, if you go through and look at it, the TPO, the membrane, is actually brand new better under the solar panel. So amazingly, well, actually, it hasn't been exposed to the sun, and it'll look like a new and an old roof all at the same time. But that being said, the heat welding that they do will actually adhere better under the panels, so it actually works out okay. They'll be, they'll have a lot of patches, they'll be in very good condition.
Okay. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item J. Approve bid waiver for technology and sound system for NHS athletic and PE department training. 14,000, 526, 38.
Second.
Mr. Schmedler, you want to say second?
The athletic department has a few auxiliary spaces here at the high school. One is the weight room, and the second is the spin bike room. The athletic department accepted a donation from CCSU, I think almost two years ago now, of about 30 spin bikes, like the exercise style bikes, and they use those to augment some PE classes, and the sports teams use them as well. These spaces kind of fell behind, there's absolutely no technology in either of them, and with the training and workout and style of work that occurs there, it helps to have a little music, as you know, if you go to the gym and you work out with your headphones on. So we'd like to get them up to speed. We are gonna expand on the existing network sound system that is in this building, the cafeteria, upper gym, this room, all have that sound system in it, so we're just branching off of it and adding to it. And we do that, so if we have major events or the need to network the rooms together for sound purposes, we could do that, so we'd appreciate the support on these two programs.
Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to continue, or? Next one is personnel.
Oh, next to, motion to go into executive session to discuss items K and L, which is discussion possible action on the Assistant Superintendent's contract extension and the Chief Financial Officer's contract extension, executive session to include the board and the superintendent.
Second.
Um, yeah, we could, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we'll have also Mr. Forn join us for the first part, and potentially Mr. Kane for the second part.
Can I? Do we have a second for that?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are in executive session. We are reconvening at 9:22.
Oh, god.
This is still, these are early by comparison, guys.
I know. Okay.
Motion to approve the extension of the Assistant Superintendent's contract through, sorry, I need to pull it actually open. Too many things. Oh, that's why it's in this section. Uh, motion to approve the extension of the superintendent's, uh, the Assistant Superintendent's contract for the years 2021 through 2023.
Second.
As presented.
Second.
All right, second for Gail. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is there a delay in Tina, or no? She's just not voting?
No, she's moving, I see her.
Oh.
She just could be a little like.
She's doing two things at once.
All right, sorry.
She must be like a fish in a bowl, like, seriously?
Tina, do you want to vote on that? Tina, did you want to cast a vote on the contract extension?
No, I already voted. Well, I didn't say nay. No, I.
All right. Next one?
Yep. Motion to approve the, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the extension and revisions to the Chief Financial Officer's contract as presented, ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Oh, abstention, yes, sorry. And, at the end now.
Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Can I say one thing about the two gentlemen, just publicly? I could not do this job without Kevin or Mike. We have, like I said, in the next session, you know, there's fights, there's, but, but I trust all of the work they do, I have 100% faith that they are clearing up the mission and vision for New Britain's kids, and it's gonna, it's gonna matter alongside Kevin for five years and Mike in this capacity for three. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, thank you.
Made in second.
Made in second, and we have, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at 9:26.